Good evening and welcome to Tuesday, January 8th, 2019, school committee meeting here at Tinsborough High School, 7:00 PM. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. I officially call this meeting to order. We will start with introductions.
Chair, chairboards.
Rob Mullin.
Good evening, Julie Dusicki.
Mike Moran.
Good evening, Robert Blake, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flagg, Superintendent.
Anthony General.
Brian McMahon.
Amy Williams.
Paul Mitchell.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Sophia Campbell, Student Representative.
As everybody wants to stand, let's begin. The President's flag of the United States of America. Intimate Republic of Orange County, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to approve the December 4th and December 12th school committee meetings?
I'll make that motion.
Before we do that, can we also approve the 2004 policy subcommittee meetings, December 4th, capital asset subcommittee meetings minutes, and the December 17th negotiations subcommittee meetings, all in the same motion?
I'll second that motion.
I'll second that one.
Any further discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye. Vote. Carrie, seven zero, there. Correspondents.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just wanted to know if the committee wanted me to reach out to the finance committee, much like we did last year, like on to your January 22nd school committee meeting. If you recall, last year, we invited the finance committee in as we looked at initial budget presentation or adoption. I think it was a great opportunity for them to ask questions and see our process and understand what drives the school districts, so I want to do that again for January 22nd.
I think it's good right there. I think they appreciated the invitation and now, so.
Have a little favor.
Should we make a motion to approve that?
Got to get a motion to approve the Tinsborough Finance Committee by January 22nd.
Second.
Session. All those in favor? Aye. Vote. Carrie, seven zero, there.
Excellent, we'll do that tomorrow, thank you.
Visitors, comments, and questions? Seeing none. Share the success.
Congratulations to the December Students of the Month, Zachary Galizia, Shaya Familia, Brenna Therkell, and Annabelle Harrington. In December, English and Theater students went on their annual trip to New York City. They went to the top of the One World Trade Center and saw the Broadway show Wicked. Members of NHS volunteered to help organize and distribute toys for the Toys for Tots program before the holidays. And the theater program's annual dinner theater performance will be on Thursday and Friday. This year, they are performing the Gauzy Chaperone.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can just make one comment in terms of shared success. She comes to all our meetings and shares everyone else's success. Sophie, college news lately, anything something that you want to share?
Yeah, I got into Harvard.
Mr. Chair, I've been here since 1997. That's the third student in 22 years that was put into Harvard University. It's been admitted to Harvard University, so it's a huge honor, congratulations.
Thank you.
Very proud.
The location has been tent to retire.
Yes, we staff one tonight, Marshall Dallas, TES specialist teacher. After 20-plus years of service, her retirement date is June 30th.
Congratulations, as we look at any retirement. Unfinished business?
None.
Wait, if you don't want finished business? New business?
Plenty of it.
Hi, of it.
We have some second read policies. Policy 1.2, school committee meeting procedure, that's been in your drive for a couple weeks. And policy 2.4, use appeals under joint jurisdiction of school recreation departments. And that has also been in your drive for a few weeks.
I've got to get a motion to approve policies 1.2 to 2.4 as a second read.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Vote. Carrie, seven zero, there. First blue gear, initial budget discussion.
Yes, so we have a presentation that we'll go through. The reason why each agenda is light tonight is because our focus tonight really is going to be FY '20 budget development, preparation, and planning, and really to get a sense from the committee of the direction they're going to like us to go. So if I want to jump to the first slide, I want to thank all the administrators who were in the room tonight. And I think, you know, this slide right here really speaks to how we approach the budget over the past couple of years. I remember 15 years ago, in working in isolation as a high school administrator, where that was all I cared about. And I'm very proud that this group, this administrative team, comes together, and it's not about their own fight, and it's not about their own department or their own building. We truly look at what the needs of our kids are, K-12. We are driven by our strategy for district improvement, and we prioritize the needs of our district. So using our strategy for district improvement, looking at our vision statement and our big rocks, our three big rocks, those truly do inform the decisions we make and the priorities we place in terms of establishing the budget. And this is the most important role the school committee has is approving and developing a budget that is going to meet the needs of our kids. So thanks to all the administrators for all kind of working collaboratively and pulling the rope in the same direction. So we'll go to the first slide. So again, this is a, this is a very high-level, 30,000-foot view of the budget. These numbers will shake out over the next two weeks, so our goal is to come back on January 22nd with much tighter numbers, but we do need to recognize that there will be some play in some of these numbers as we move forward. Right now, the big, the big nos, the big expenses right now, in terms of next year, we know that rolling over our salaries, district line is going to be about $381,000. We also know that we're going to get a little bit of a credit on our utilities. Mr. Messina, you want to speak to the utility credit?
Sure. Basically, we're in a new contract cycle with our natural gas and electricity rates. So natural gas started actually in November at a better rate, and electricity will be coming in June. So that is actually the savings based on the new rates that we're getting through power options.
So that's good news, we like that. To see it $73,000 go in the right direction is a good thing. If you recall, in November, Mrs. Lorenzi came in to presentation at that time about our district placements and where we were at that time. And at that time, I believe, we were above $300,000 over budget, over what we budget, given the needs of some of our students. It's safe to say right now that as we look to budget for FY '20, that number has increased to below $670,000. So right now, before we do anything, before we look at any programmatic or systemic changes in our district, we're looking at $9,000 to roll the district forward. So we'll go to the next slide, Mark. Actually, I want to go a little bit deeper on those tuitions. You can see that last year, as we sat at this table, we do the best we can with the information we have at that time. January of 2018, we were projecting and budgeting for 20 students out of district. Of those 20 students out of district who get out of the next FY '19 bullet, we would budget $287,000 for 365-day tuitions. If you look at where we are now FY '20, we see 24 students potentially going out of district, and FY '20, 365-day tuitions of $857,000. And I think this was a point that Mrs. Lorenzi had in mind in November was, it's not necessarily that our numbers are going through the roof. Our numbers are going up marginally, but it's the level of need that the students have in addressing those needs. These are our kids, and we're going to do everything we can to provide them everything they need, we are going to provide, but it's costly. Just to give you a little historic perspective, we looked at the October enrollment of district placements. 10 years ago, we had 15 students out of district, any of the public or private placement. Five years ago, we were at 17 students, and next year, we'll project to be 24. So you can see, it is increasing, but again, it comes down to the level of need. And again, I would say back in 10 years ago, as we looked at 365-day tuitions, we also had some state agencies that were supporting us with the residential component or whatnot. So that's changed as well, and that impacts our budget as we move forward.
Do you clarify, are you saying state agencies don't help us today?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to check up there.
Yes, thank you. So we'll go to the next slide. So much like we do, the admin teams were great, and they understood and they recognized that our budget was tight. So we had conversations, and this began in November, we met finally in December, to say, what do we absolutely need for next year? What are our top priorities? And these are the priorities we came up with. So the first priority is appoint six school psychologists on this Norris Road campus. Given some of the social emotional needs of our kids on this campus, that compounded with the fact that we didn't fill the director of school counseling position on this campus. Some of our kids that are needy are taking a lot of time from different professionals throughout the day, and we need additional support there. Additionally, we have one full-time school psychologist on this campus who does all the testing and therapies with the kids, and we're just seeing that's not enough. So that's an increase there. In terms of INVO and OT increase, those are related service provider increases that are mandated by, again, the needs of our kids and their IEPs. So we need to increase those because we just don't have the staffing to be compliant with individual ed plans. The BCBA, that's another component of the elementary school, specifically where we're seeing a greater need to support our kids down at the elementary school. And finally, the last thing we talked about was, and we've talked about this, I feel, for every year, the past 10 years, for the past 10 years, is full-day kindergarten. So you can see that that comes with a cost of $130,000. If you go all the way to the bottom of that column, you will see that we have a middle school reading position. That position was staffed by a paraprofessional. To be fully compliant, to do as best for our kids, we need to make sure that position moving forward is filled by a licensed educator. So that's an increase of $30,000. So the increase into the budget is $288,000 because of those positions and those needs. And again, we asked the departments, we asked the principals to come in with, give us your best budget. What can you, what do you absolutely need? There's no, there's no fat, there's no pie in the sky, this is what we need. You can see other things, other requests, and the financial considerations, I'm tuned down. Some of those can be flooded potentially, as Rob and Amy, you know, we're going to see some of those in the capital asset committee. Some of them, we look for open every spot, resources, so there'll be no cost. And then we'll just have to look at our current PD and textbook account to deal with the grade three resources. But $288,000 is what we're talking about as an increase to our budget. So if we go to the next slide, please? So let's talk a little bit more about kindergarten. And the reason I want to talk more about kindergarten is, we posed the question in the room with the administrators. If we could only do one thing on that list, what is our top priority? And to a person, from a high school principal to the middle school principal, the elementary principal, it was full-day kindergarten. So full-day kindergarten comes at a cost, a potential increase of $130,000 to our budget. Currently, we have 5.6 FTEs, full-time equivalency staff, that run our full-day and our half-day kindergarten program. To achieve a free full-day kindergarten program, we would need to increase that 1.6 teacher to 1.0 at a cost of $25,000. In so doing, to go to a free full-day kindergarten, we're going to lose potentially $175,000 worth of tuition revenue because of pay-as-you-go program right now. That money can be offset by minimally $70,000 because of the increase in Chapter 70 money of county kids from 1.5 as 1.0s. So the bottom line is, though our expenses go up by 25,000 to 175,000, it could be offset by potential $70,000 in state revenue, it's about a $130,000 cost to do kindergarten.
Just not this year, or any, it's a year afterwards.
Yes. It's a roll. It's a roll of costs. But the big thing, the big thing for us, when we're in better shape, the factories, we have 5.6 FTEs on staff already. While a lot of communities go to the full-time kindergarten, the bulk of their cost is hiring staff. We're almost there, and we have the space, we have the curriculum. It's a matter of Carrie and her team scheduling appropriately so that we don't have union issues in terms of preps and whatnot, but that can be done, that's absolutely doable. So that's, that's the cost. To really see what the impact is and where we are as a community on a state level, we're going to go a little bit deeper. So we'll go to the next slide, Mark. This slide is pretty telling. This PowerPoint will be put in your drive tonight or tomorrow so you can all have access to it. But essentially, the dark blue represents free full-day kindergarten in the state of Massachusetts. The red arrow at the top is us, we are two shades lighter than that. The maroon arrow that I highlight there is Dust, Will Grant, Dust will just vote to go free full-day kindergarten next year. It is a, actually, I didn't even put an arrow in there, Newton also voted to go free full-day kindergarten next year. So we're going to be one of a handfuls of communities in the state that doesn't offer free full-day kindergarten. So you may look at that and say, so what? What does that mean? Well, let's go a little bit deeper and talk about the research. Let me turn it over to Mark at this time.
So what we'd like to do is talk a little bit about-
Carrie, if you'd like to come to the table too, please.
Thank you, sir. What we'd like to do is talk a little bit about the research and the data behind the map that talks about the trends in Massachusetts and nationwide, and then a couple slides later, we'll talk about the actual trends here at TES in Tinsborough. So there's a lot of organizations nationally who've been rallying around the research pretty quickly over the past 10 years to really make sure that public school districts across the nation are listening. I'm not going to read the slide to you, I'd like you to, I thought I said I'd always read as I talk, so take a quick gloss through it. I think some of the major highlights and points here are, there's plenty of lunch toodle data out there to talk about children who are in full-day classes and how they show greater reading and mathematical achievement gains than their peers who have been in half-day programs. It is an inarguable set of data that we will talk about in a few minutes. We did, the elementary school team did a fantastic data crunch over the past few years to isolate some of those numbers so we could have some local data to back that up. Full-day kindergarten classroom teachers will have more time to know that kids get to identify their learning needs earlier. There's a lot of data around the direct correlation between the early intervention and the needs of students at grades one, two, and three lessening over time because you have more time with the kids in the kitchen, you've got more time to identify their needs. Something that's less quantifiable, quite honestly, is the social-emotional impact, and that side of learning that we talk about that a lot in this room and in this school district. So it's a little easier to crunch numbers around ELA and reading, sorry, ELA and math, but I think there's a lot of people that would argue, and there's a lot of data sets out there to talk about the benefit socially and emotionally. Kindergarten students are ready for a full day, and they'll get into classrooms with their peers for a while, it allows them to apply more authentic learning opportunities, more peer interactions throughout the day with adults and kids that they don't necessarily practice in a controlled environment in a half-day model. This is a tough one until you start to feel it over time, and those people that we've already talked with about this, when we talk about internally, this is a long-term investment. When you drop money into a new math program, for example, or into something else in the district, honestly, you can feel the impact of that pretty quickly. This is a long-term investment that we make in our district and our kids by name over time. So there's data out there that really supports the savings of three to one in the dollar range because as kids progress through, we're not investing more financial resources into intervention program, into extended resources, and other things that will support the social-emotional activities of kids. We're behind the curve a little bit due to being half-day program. Ultimately, it does provide a more appropriate bridge in 2018, 19, from kindergarten, from pre-grand to kindergarten, because there's so much, and Carrie and I talked about this, there's so much more happening in first grade and kindergarten when it comes to kids being able to read successfully coming out of kindergarten, that that change from half-day to full-day is massive for a kid to navigate a whole day of school. So they really learn to navigate a whole day of school before the impact of education really hits first grade. Locally, that map represents the reality that 96% of all kindergarten students, public kindergarten students in Massachusetts are enrolled in a full-day program. 96% of the kids in the state. Where only 4% of the kids in the state are enrolled in a half-day program, so we are in our kiddos in half-day area of that 4%. So the map is a visual within itself of those of us who are numbered oriented, this one is staggering, but that percentage is that great. Locally, stepping through a couple of the highlights of the data sets that the admin team at the elementary school put together for us, over the past four years, pretty consistent that we've had 50% of our kids enrolled in full-day, with 50% in the half. These next four sets are the eye-opening piece of data here. So over the past four years, 60% of our first-grade students who qualified for Title I reading came out of the half-day K program, where only 23% of the students in grade one who qualified for Title I reading came out of full-day. And related to that map, 16% of our half-day kindergarten scored below the end of the benchmark, only 8% of them coming out of the full-day did. So if you look at that bottom, this is the piece that relates directly back to the data that we are most concerned about and we are most excited about, the possibility moving forward that half-day students are three times more likely to be in need of reading intervention, and two times more likely to be in need of math intervention than the peers in the full-day. That, to me, highlights the great divide within our community between people who can get into a full-day program versus people cannot. And I don't think it's appropriate at this point in time, I think the time has come to fix that.
So we supplied data, Carrie, we see an answer on the ground, answer the ground questions, and anything you may want to know about kindergarten or go deeper.
Where are the other 17% of the kids from?
Kids who came from out of district or did not attend, I think, short versus a in-class or preschool.
Okay. So those are only our-
Yes, we wanted to know what our impact, our kindergarten impact was on first grade.
What would the, would there be a half-day option still, or just everyone would have to be full-day?
Full-day.
Full-day.
Full-day for all is, you know, I think, as Mark and Mike alluded to, I think at this point in time, it's not a nice-to-have, it's a requirement at this point. In order to give our students a level playing field with other communities, with students who are able to attend full-day, I feel like this is an absolute necessity and a critical time for us to be doing this.
And just so we can say, the principals are coming to the January 22nd meeting as well as department heads, so if you don't have questions tonight, you want to formulate some questions, Carrie will be available on January 22nd to answer any of those questions. Certainly, we can answer them as well. I know we're kind of hitting with information, but, you know, we didn't have our admin budget meeting until the summer 20th, I think it was, and that's when our collective group said, this is our number one priority. So we're three weeks out of us collectively saying, yep, this is where we need to go. So we're happy to answer questions tonight, but in full respect, you may not have questions tonight.
So fundamentally, I would look at the school system and the production line where we're building young adults. I always look at, you know, the last thing in the line is where we need to be perfect 100%, and that's essentially the high school. But if you're telling me that if we do these things earlier, that end product is going to be better, that's what I need to understand, I guess, is, because I look at $130,000, and that could be used in the high school to do something. And I don't know if that being spent there is better off being spent in the initial phases of the job that the school system does. So I guess that's where I need to be convinced and better understand.
Yeah, I think, I think we're spending a lot of resources in the early years providing intervention for students because we're not providing a full-day kindergarten. And those are resources and funds that could be directed elsewhere in the district. Those are, it's staffing, it's programming, it's-
Yeah, and Carrie can speak to this much more, like, ultimately, I'm allowed to, but the reality is, I'll just use reading as an example, you know, there's a time when it flips, right? We talk in-house all the time that you learn to read, and then somewhere around that fourth grade, fifth grade mark, the bar flips, and then you need to learn. If we haven't captured the kiddos and gotten them to benchmark and rate them, and gotten every tool and toolbox to make them be able to make that flip, and also subject theirs, particularly in reading, writing, mathematics, the way that the curriculum has trickled down over the past 20 years, particularly in Massachusetts, and the pressure of high stakes testing coming as early as third grade, good or bad, by one size and that statement and just the fact, all of that says more of our kids will be able to take advantage of the flagship programming and the high-end stuff that you would like them to do. That's what the research says, that's what our belief says. We have data to show how many kids are coming out of our half-day program who aren't ready then, and if you track those kids over time, I would imagine we could come up with a fact that we said as well to talk about where those kids are compared to parents over time. It takes much longer, the longer you figure out what the difference is.
So I just want to add, because I want to challenge the mindset there, come from a different perspective. Where I see it is the investment at the younger grades or the kindergarten is actually beneficial where, and I'm looking at it from data, because the business I work in is data analytics, and you look, we drill down data, data, data speaks to it. And so if you're making, you know, monetary investment in the so-called product, right, the child that you want to have come up, it's better, I think, and this is just how I treat investing, if you invest early on, the dividends are paying off better because we're not having to pay the higher cost of, at the high school level, middle school level for the intervention, because you hopefully, and I think the data will prove it out, you have fewer students requiring that. There are statistically students who are going to need assistance and help to maybe learning disabilities that are outside of the comprehension that we're going for with the reading and the math and such. And so I think it's a better investment at that lower grade. One is hopeful, but I think also data-driven, that in the later grades, you're not going to have the diversions of money you spend intervene as opposed to the fourth grade where the child learns to read, reads along that, look you're talking about. That's, I really honestly think that-
I don't necessarily disagree with you. What I'm looking at is, so we have AP classes in the high school, we have STEM programs in the middle school and the high school, we have some of these other programs. Is there another program that we should have in the high school, or is it, you know, is investing? Where do you invest these funds? And that's, you know, is it, this the best place to invest for that? And that's what I want to be sure, as a whole, system as a whole, that this is the best place for it, if we can afford it.
Yeah, definitely.
So I think it's definitely one of the things I'm concentrating on, is protecting our program at the high school, protecting the offers at the high school, protecting the AP, protecting robotics, STEM, plus engineering. We have all those opportunities, we have VHS, we have virtual high school, so we have different opportunities for our kids in the high school, none of that is going away. I think if we were to look pre-K to 12 right now, our top unit in the district, this is it. This is it.
And I do think we're pretty proud of the fact that we've been able for the past few years to sustain a really viable curriculum review cycle. So as we go through the work, K to 12, we've taken a look at science systematically, we've looked at math systemically. This year, we're looking at social studies and history, and we're looking at computer science. All of that, we've been able to do within the budget cycle. So I don't think this is going to take away from our ability to continue to support programming, evaluation, and implementation. I just don't see it, because I think we've been very careful and do this responsibly over those-
The point is, because we're in a good spot, I mean, we're a 0.4 teacher, we're going to be able to do this. Much different than a lot of communities.
Well, the point I can also add to that is, we've also done hard things over the past few years.
Yeah.
Reorganizing the middle school, where I think that what Paul or Mr. Mitchell might be asking about is, would we be cutting somewhere else to afford this? I don't think that's the message that administration is sending, at least what I'm hearing. I think we would still keep status coordinating, but this is an investment that we need to make to lift those kids up to full-day and to have them, so we can avoid some of these statistics that we have here.
I would say, I would say we will do the same thing we did this year, how we did last year. We will make budget decisions that are driven by our strategy that's best for kids. We restructured the middle school last year, not for budget savings. We did that so we could do other things for our kids and really meet the needs of what our strategy is saying where we want to go. We'll do the same thing again this year. We're not going to lose programming, we're not going to lose what we value for the sake of this. This is, this is something that we're prioritizing, how to make it happen in the most effective way, that's kind of the goal. So I think you're all set, Mr. Chair. I don't know.
I clearly didn't help much.
I see Mr. Mitchell wants more data, right? More data.
I'm happy to, I said to Mike, you could drown in full-day kindergarten data, because this is something that has been longstanding in the Commonwealth, so I don't mean to correct you, but 20 years, this has been a process across the state.
So you have other districts that- So do you have other districts that have shown the improvements in these...
No one goes back to half-day kindergarten once they move to full day.
Oh, but in these...
In terms of student achievement.
The achievement of kids, because like, this slide shows ninety-five percent of the students in the state are in a full...
You know, I think the best way that I can describe the benefit of a full-day kindergarten versus a half-day, our half-day students are getting approximately five hundred and forty hours less of instructional time than our full-day students. How can we ever replicate that? How can we ever make that up? We wouldn't do that for a first grader, an eighth grader, or a, a high school student, take away five hundred-plus hours of education. So to me, this is what we've had to do, and our teachers have done it a tremendous job. I think our half-day program is, is exceptional at what we, we are able to offer with what we're able to afford our students. However, they have such limitations with, with the time crunch that they're under, and because of the pace and rigor of the curriculum demands, those students are at a disadvantage right now. Those teachers are feeling the pressure of the rush because dismissal is at twelve fifteen. And again, our students are getting a significant amount of time in the full-day program that our students in the half-day program are not getting. So it's, it's almost this constant catch-up for those students who have missed that amount of time of instruction. And it's not just, when I say instruction, I mean globally, so, you know, academically, socially, emotionally, you know, we have students coming into kindergarten that have never been into a school setting. So just the, the, you know, the mere task of getting on the bus and into the building is a, is a daunting process for them, so...
So to Paul's point, right now, what we're saying is all qualitative data, right? Let's pull a little qualitative data, and let's look at achievement, improvement and achievement results from, from communities that have gone to full-day kindergarten and quantified some, I'm sure, I'm sure the research is out there.
Can I ask, ask another question from another angle?
Sure.
Which is, are there any additional resources that are going to have to come out of this from, see buses, classrooms, materials?
No, I think as Mike said, we are set up in terms of where we're at currently, to be in a very good place to move forward. So when districts adopted full-day kindergarten previously, they didn't have the staffing in place, they either had space, you know, limitations, we don't have that problem currently at TES. The curriculum, as Mark alluded to, is not a problem, so we don't have to go out and hire, you know, a, a large amount of staff, we don't have to worry about space. The curriculum pieces are all there. So really, it is that point four increase, and the loss of, of revenue, from your question. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that was, I was kind of impassioned with our, our top request, so I want to go back to the next slide. So, given all the new requests, if you recall from ten minutes ago, the number's two hundred eighty-eight thousand. So that would put our total request moving forward at one point two million dollars. So that's a staggering number, so that's not something that those of us who attended last, so last night we went to the tri board meeting, and we heard from a community taking a very conservative approach to the budget this year, some priorities the community are to maintain, the bond rating, to maintain seven percent of our reserves, to, you know, we have a significant increase in healthcare costs, ten percent, at potentially three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So essentially, when, when you looked at, from a town perspective, what the increase in expenses were versus the increase in revenues, the bottom line was approximately twenty-six thousand dollars for the entire community to go up. And that request is a little bit more than twenty-six thousand. Now, I know those requests were for liberating thirty thousand feet and getting it, but one point two is still, and that's a lot for us. So if we go to the next slide, Mark, we can know that historically, you know, FY eighteen, our budget saw a five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar increase, or two point nine seven percent. FY nineteen, last year, we saw a five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase of two point five nine percent. So our current budget's twenty million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. So as we look to go forward, I just put it up in the quarters from, from two to three percent, what that would look like for us, given historically what we've always received from the town. Also, the town is going to levy a two point, two and a half percent tax on everyone in the community. So this is something that we're going to ask the school committee to consider tonight. Where would you like us to go? Where would you like us to go for January twenty-second? The recommendation on the town side was to go to two percent or four hundred thousand, certainly that is difficult, knowing that we're at one point two million right now. But, we're at one point two million, but we also believe and we know that there's some things we can do. So Mark, let's go to the next slide, please. So let's look at preliminary budget adjustments. We know of that two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in requests from, from all stakeholders, that we could, we could reduce that by approximately fifty thousand dollars. We know that when we had a middle school administrator retire at the end of last year, we filled that internally and did not fill an administrative position. So we still have that position in the budget, but we never filled it, given the way we were trending with some of our, our district tuitions. So we could reduce that director of school council position by ninety thousand dollars. We know that because some of our students are going out of district, that will enable us to rework some of our staffing, so we'll be able to reduce two special ed positions in the district at a standard of a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. We also know that there, there's another position or two, whether it's maintenance, cost of labor, technology, admin assistant, whatever, support positions, that we can reduce by about fifty thousand dollars in the district. We also know that historically, we've received the past two years just over or right at a hundred thousand dollar credit from Valley. We've taken part of that to balance a budget in the past. We could assume up to a hundred thousand dollars in credit from Valley this year, because our student, students attending Valley is a higher number this year, tuition's going up in the future, so there could be more kickback coming. We don't know what that's going to look like, and that's always a gamble, but that's something we could expect. So there's another four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars that we could potentially take off, or one point two, Mark, next slide. And now we're at eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. So that's where we are right now, knowing we haven't really looked at what we need to do or where we can go. So the next three slides are really for school committee discussion. Allocation. We, we work for you. What would you like us to come back with on the twenty-second? What type of allocation? And again, we can go anywhere you want, but for, for me, simply, we could assume the two percent growth, that was recommended last night, and come back in two weeks when the school committee budget surpasses above four hundred and three thousand dollars. We could present a level service budget that includes identified needs without the predetermined limit at one point two million, or then modify version eight thirty-five. Or you could say, come back to us with a budget that hits somewhere between that two and three percent, or five hundred to six hundred and ten thousand dollars, or you could choose some different number. The next consideration for the committee is, you could say, include kindergarten or don't include kindergarten. And finally, valid credit, you could say, factor a hundred thousand dollars in the budget, fifty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand, nothing, entirely up to you. So I guess if we go back to number one, a lot of community has some discussion, we're, we're, we're looking for direction, we will put the budget book together, in any manner you see fit, we try to provide you with our priorities, our needs, to give you a, again, a twenty-five thousand foot view of where we are. We know none of these numbers factor in a potential increase in circuit break-in and or chapter seventy. So we anticipate those numbers will go up, revenues will go up, so that'll bring our requests down. So it'll all shake out over the next couple of weeks, and I'm just going to see it looks to be sideways every time we talk about numbers, the guy gets nervous. I'll do okay. So we need, we need some direction from the committee, ask you how you'd like us to proceed, Mr. Chair.
Well, first, I'd like to say thank you to all of you who are here this evening for working on this with Dr. Fleming and putting this presentation together. At this time, I'll open it up to the committee, Mr. Mitchell.
I think that it's important for the community to know what the needs are of the school system, and it's our job to sort of get that information out there, and then we're going to get back what the town can afford and work from there. So the idea of, you know, presenting the one point two million increase with the full-day kindergarten is something that's important for the community to understand. This is January, and the budget's not going to be due until May, there's going to be a lot of time between now and then to adjust it and straighten and get it to level areas. I think it's important to present these things, let the community understand, and everybody else in the town weigh in on what these, how that'll affect the rest of the town, and have to adjust for that, knowing that there's some way, there's some, some adjustments to that one point two million, and it's also one point two, so the eight thirty-five number is something I would be comfortable giving a first pass at.
Well, I agree, I agree with Paul, and I just have a question about the circuit breaker money, is there a certain percentage that's typical for circuit, circuit breaker money? And how much is there?
So...
Joe.
So the state, over the life of the circuit breaker program, has never fully funded the seventy-five percent by statute that they're supposed to. It also, the variable in it is the cost that we can report in the circuit breaker program. It has to be by student, and it has to be over a certain threshold to report that student as part of the circuit breaker program. What we do anticipate in terms of a revenue bump might be in the extraordinary maintenance window that opens up at the end of this month, where we're able to report back to the state additional circuit breaker monies that we, that we might be entitled to based upon our costs this year, because this has been a year of flux where some of the numbers weren't, weren't anticipated in terms of costs. That will, if, if we're fortunate enough to bring that into fiscal year twenty, that will be an additional resource that we'll have for FY twenty in our circuit breaker account. Ideally, we try to keep one year in arrears for circuit breaker, the money that we get in this year goes to next year's budget, just due to the volatility of the reimbursement program with the state. So it's, it's a, it's an estimating target right up until, I think, Sarah March, they talk about the actual filing deadline for circuit breaker, and then you get the money between April and June thirtieth. And then it's a, do we need it for this year, or can we protect some of those revenues for next year's budget?
It's hard to say.
It's a...
But you have some, some guidance there, definitely. But no, I, I agree with Paul saying, I think we should go forward and, you know, tell people our needs, and, you know, and, and we might have to cut it a bit as, as we go on, but I think the full-day kindergarten is important.
I concur, full-day kindergarten is important to the community, I think the payoffs are, are not only monetary, but with the students themselves, and more productive or more understanding of the material they're learning, so there's less intervention, I think it, it goes the one way for them to be able to take care of those advanced programs in the high school.
All right, anyone else?
Question?
Yes.
Could we livestream this on Instagram so we can get those hearts, so that, you know, Facebook, get a heart, or, you know, the angry face, you know, people talking about the community?
The technology, guys. Because I believe what the, the committee is saying is, let's go with the eight thirty-five, one ninety?
Eight thirty-five, so eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, we'll go with that number, we're going to include kindergarten, and then I heard we want to see potential strategy to come off of that, or no, not yet?
I want to hear more about the kindergarten stuff, get more information regarding what other communities have seen, and that sort of thing, you know, sort of be able to defend that for the community if that's the direction we want to go. I guess we're just going to have to figure it out from there.
Well, that's part of the eight thirty-five, one ninety, that's right, that's right. So in terms of eight thirty-five, one ninety, do you want to see for January twenty-second how we would get off of that if we needed to, so the community has some sense of where this would go if not fully funded? Do you want to ask?
Yeah, I do, I don't think that we're at that point.
Okay.
I think you should be.
Would it be advantageous to also look at the one point two million, just to see what that, you know, what that does? I mean, and I know we started at eight thirty-five with the math that you provided.
Yep. Well, I mean, so the, the one point two million doesn't account for two teachers that, that we, we wouldn't keep because kids are out of district. So to say, I, I think I'm, I'm comfortable defending eight thirty-five as a level service budget. And truly level service budget.
All right.
No, this is, no, this is just the direction for us, we'll come back with a budget book on the twenty-second, with some more information regarding achievement, quantitative information, quantitative, and then we'll go from there.
All right, again, thank you all for coming this evening. I listened to Mr. Messina talk about finance now, and then we'll get you out of it.
It will be as long as Dr. Branko, I'll say that, every, every meeting, every meeting, I'll say that. Signing of bills tonight, eleven bill warrants were prepared, presented to the school committee. In your drive is the list of warrant number, accounts, and amounts. For signing of payroll, there were two payrolls in this meeting, will be our review, the payroll of December twenty-fourth and the payroll of January seventh. Those dates, warrant numbers, and amounts are in your drive as well, and nothing other than budget under others, somewhere else.
School committee discussion.
Master, thank you.
I would like to thank Mr. Guthrie for letting me know about the elevator repair going on during the Christmas break, that was completed, finally, the front elevator at Kingsborough Elementary School. He let me know about it so that, and invited myself and a certain elevator aficionado that I know could come by and take a look at it. Tom Buckley from Buckley Elevator was fantastic, very gracious, explaining quite a bit of the process, and showing my son, Matt, and he was very excited to be able to get a part of, be a part of that, so thank you very much, and I appreciate the heads up on that. Other than that, welcome back to all the students, all the parents, hope you had a great break, and, and the teachers, I hope you're all set and ready to rest it up and ready to have a great second half of the year.
I just want to thank Dr. Fleming for writing up his superintendent goals update. I thought it was very informative, and it helps us understand as a committee, you know, how he's meeting his goals for the year, and the progress that's happening, which is a lot of progress, and I appreciate that, thank you.
A piece I want to add, just a discussion, is, maybe you can touch on it, our, our earlier discussion about outcomes for children, where I'm getting feedback from people in the community about their kids, and they're in college, and they've completed their first semester, they graduated last year, and even students that graduated the year before. The feedback I'm getting is, you know, Kingsborough prepared.
I just want to say a Happy New Year and welcome back to the...
I'm all set, thank you.
Congratulations on Harvard.
Congratulations, Sophie, that's a great thing, whether you go there or not, it's just a great honor, it's a safe, it's a... It is the budget season, and it's, I think it's a good thing that the town is... It is the budget season, and it's, I think it's a good thing that the town is sort of opening this up and allowing these discussions and bringing them forward in a timeframe where people can't say it's just all of a sudden thrown from. You know, we have these meetings and discussions, and they will, people will say that. Be open about it, and tell the community, or get it out to the community, is what the needs are, and what you as the administration team see as the future of education. You know, when I, my kids went to school, full-day kindergarten wasn't really thought of or worried about. And that's the perspective that I felt from, is that, you know, there were, one parent was a hole in most of the households, and I don't believe that that's the case. And I don't have that, that type of relationship with people in the community that, you know, have the young kids in school. That's the difference. And you've got to see that as the administrative team, as the type of kids in the community involved. And you've got to explain that to us, and make sure that the old fires like me understand why these changes need to be addressed.
Congratulations, Sophie. I'm just curious, did you go to half-day or full-day kindergarten?
I went to full-day.
I think you did say half-day.
Just to give, just to give a brief rest, tomorrow, Mr. Guthrie and I are meeting with Valada Granzinger to talk about potential bid on our bleeder, and moving forward with our construction there. So, I'm just going to be at that meeting as well. So, thank you for the attitude, and your support of us, certainly, it's a collaborative effort. And, you know, I have to recognize, because I grab them every single day. Thank you, Mr. Messina, for putting up with me as we talk numbers, and putting up with my not-necessary linear math battle brain.
Thank you. Again, thank you all for coming. Be careful leaving the village and driving home, because it is icy and slippery out. We do have a need for executive session this evening to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigation position of the public body, as to what the chair... We will return from executive session, and we will return to regular session meeting. This meeting, this action requires a roll call vote.
In favor. Make motion. Did you go to half-day kindergarten? Can't even remember anymore, that was so long ago. In favor.
In favor.
Thank you, and have a good night.